Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for January 23rd. It is a double agenda day. After the roll call, we'll start with tonight's agenda. Under our new council rules, we try to get tonight's agenda set so that the signup sheets can be ready, and then we'll turn to the advanced agenda for January 30th. So Ms. Farnsworth, could you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kneer.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson. I understand she's going to be participating by phone.
I think she's on... I don't know if...
We can come back to her. Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
And...
Oh, I hear her.
She's here.
All right.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Let the record deflect it. All councilmembers present, Councilmember Wilkerson participating by telephone.
All right, and Mr. Sawyer is in the room. We are going to interview you in a few minutes, but we're going to take care of some other business first, so thanks for being here for your boards and commission interview. Again, turning to the agenda tonight, there's several matters where there have been requests to suspend the rules to add to the agenda, including settlement for a city case. We have Mr. Ormsby in the House to do that, but is there a motion to suspend the rules for adding up items to the agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, any abstentions? All right, the rules are suspended, and I'm going to start with, since we have Mr. Ormsby here, if you'd come down and brief the potential settlement.
Thank you, Council President, and members of the council. This is a proposed settlement. It's one of the three water system damage cases that we talked to the council about in executive session back in December. We have been able to resolve this one. We're close on the other two, so hopefully in the next two, three weeks, we'll be back. But we would recommend that the council approve the resolution so that the mayor can execute the settlement agreement, and we can have this case resolved. Be happy to answer any questions. Councilwoman...
Just remind us that it was a broken water main, or was it a... That's my recollection.
Well, this is a broken water main. The other two were related to the drainage we did on a reservoir to do routine maintenance, and in the past, we had that had gone out without any problems in the drain area. This time, for some reason, it backed up, and we've now rectified that going forward.
Okay, thank you.
But this was in that group.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, is there a motion to add Resolution 11 to tonight's legislative agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's added Mr. Ormsby, and you don't have to stick around for that. Mr. Bingle, I think you had a motion to defer Resolution Number 97.
Yes, so I have a resolution. I think that we're all aware of its content, its surrounding dams. I would like to make the motion to suspend it indefinitely. There are continuing talks going on on this, and we've deferred it a couple times. It just makes more sense, I think, at this point to defer indefinitely and then bring it back when it's ready, so.
All second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, Resolution 97 is deferred indefinitely for further discussion. And then, looking at ordinance C-36330 regarding landlords and tenants, Councilmember Stratton, I believe you have a motion.
I would like to make a motion to defer ordinance 36330 to February 27th.
All second.
Any discussion?
All right, I'm sorry, I missed the date. What was the date on that?
February 27th.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes.
I was just wondering if there was going to be a plan of anything between now and then, because I know there's the WebEx problem, but any other plan for...
Well, I think one of the big things that has to happen is we're going to have to take, kind of once we get a draft from legal, then we need to go out and kind of have some further engagement with stakeholders from that draft, because I think there's been a lot of feedback and a lot of confusion over, you know, what's in existing drafts or other drafts and all of that, and so I think there's going to have to be a little bit, and I'm willing, and I assume Councilmember Stratton and others are too, to go out and do that engagement work and get that feedback. So, I know I visited with some folks very last minute, late last week, as this was still, you know, some thought that perhaps there would still be a vote on this, but I think that there's just a high level of confusion and just folks really want to know what's in it, so I think we'll have to have those engagement pieces. Now, whether that's a full town hall, I'm open to that, but it may be just more focused on key stakeholders, so tenants, landlords, folks who've been engaged in the process.
And I would just add that...
Go ahead.
Part of the... My thought behind this, or our thought behind it, was we have a draft now, one draft in legal. We have four or five attorneys looking at it, so we want to make sure that we get, working with Lauren, we get a final draft that we can look at and start those discussions on, because there's too many drafts going around, so we're sticking with the one with legal and all the changes that the attorneys are making.
And I would suggest, if we can make the time, and I would, I think we should, is a study session before we vote to, as council, to talk about it and go through it as well. I think that was one piece that definitely should have maybe taken place last week if it could have been accommodated, and there was never the time to do it, so.
That might be a good idea.
So I think that's something to think about.
I just a further update. So we did get a draft back from City Legal, and I have promised to get them back, incorporate all the things that we've heard, including that a long conversation with Luis Garcia at Code Enforcement, lots of other things, so it's not on their table right now. Lauren knows that, but it'll soon be back on their table for further comment. So, and then also, we're waiting from City Finance. Remember, the core of all this was to raise money so that Code Enforcement was fully staffed, and we're still waiting for an assessment from Finance as to if every landlord paid their business license fee, which they're required by law already to do. If they did, how much money would that raise for that? Would it raise enough for the four people that Code Enforcement thinks that we need? And then that informs whether or not we look at other revenue sources or not. So we're still waiting for that bit of data as well, but I'm imagining that within the week, we'll have something back in City Legal's hands, then they have a week or so to get that, and then hopefully, again, publish it out to people, like we've done with previous drafts, so that people can see it, digest it, ask questions, comments, and do that.
I guess my follow-up is, how will outreach be different between now and the 27th than it was in the last month? Because it sounds like another round, just a different bill.
Well, I guess, I mean, what did you see as problems with the way we did it the last time?
I didn't. I was just wondering.
What would be different?
Why do we need more time to do that again if we just did it, except for that it might be a different ordinance?
Well, we don't even have consensus on what's going to be in this thing yet, so, I mean, whatever that consensus is, assuming there's consensus, I think we have to go out and get the feedback on that. So, I mean, I think it's more, it's going to be more tailored to whatever is in that draft, rather than kind of the, kind of many, many ideas that have been kind of shared throughout the process.
Well, because my understanding was, the last time we did it, we wanted to make sure we had a draft before people, so that we could get feedback on that specific draft, and the parts of the town hall that I watched, I wasn't at the work group ones, but people were still speaking not to that specific ordinance, but...
To a big idea.
Yeah, and so I'm like, is that still what we're going to have after another round of outreach? Because the intention was, we have a specific ordinance for specific feedback, and we still got a lot of general feedback, so I just don't know what's going to be different in another month. We, I feel like we have a lot of the feedback, and we're going to hear the same information over and over, so I just don't know if we need all that time, because I know people right now are struggling right now, and so another month of deferral just means another month that they might be living in bad conditions.
I don't think this is a policy you can ramp up in a day, a month, a week. I mean, it's going to take a year, probably a long time to ramp this up, so I mean, whether we do it this week or in three weeks, I don't think the actual implementation will change that drastically, but we got to make sure our Ts are crossed, Is are dotted, because there's a lot of legal issues that legal's brought to our attention that frankly, none of us have even discussed yet, and so there's a lot of pieces to this that we got to figure out, in particular, how to actually do inspections. I mean, there's a lot of legal issues there, so.
Well, I guess, I'm more in the philosophy of let's get stuff going, and if we have to fix it, we can course correct and amend it as we go.
And I think that's, I think that where it's at now, took all of the feedback that we have been hearing, all of the emails, pieces of those emails, we put pretty much everything we've heard into that draft, the current draft right now. Legal has it. Lauren has been absolutely the most patient person on the planet, and very thoughtful walking us through this. So our last discussion with legal was to give them some more time to get that draft, to make sure everything in the draft is legal and okay to do. Once we have that, we could do a number of things. We could send it out to landlords and tenants and the public and say, this is, you know, this is the end product of these discussions. I don't think that's hard to do at all, and if we had time, we could do something public if we needed to, but I think that the trick is going to be communicating it to the public where there's no misinformation in it, right? I mean, it's got to be clear, it's got to be concise, people have got to understand it when they read it, and we're not there yet. So I think there's some questions there, but I think with the February 27th deadline, we can get there.
I was just curious if it was possible to move it sooner, I guess. I just feel like the longer it gets drawn out, the longer there's more misconceptions around it, too.
Councilmember Kneer.
Actually, we talked about that, and there was some discussion about moving it to the 13th, but we realized that legal needs that time to get it right, and I was one of those people that thought, let's do it sooner, but after talking with other folks in London, I realized, no, we need that time, because I don't disagree.
But I know that some of our legal attorneys in legal are working very, very hard on it, and they're going above and beyond to make sure that what we're doing is within the scope of the law and can be done.
I wouldn't blame our attorneys for retiring after this one, so.
Mr. Perkins has a comment.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to confirm the Council President's comment that, yes, the Department of Finance, Division of Finance will have the financial assessment analysis within a week or so, so that'll be put into the equation to understand what those dollars look like on the business licenses, so we will live up to that commitment. Thank you.
And I'll just add, super frustrating that it's taken this long. Anyone who's been working on it that thinks we should have, it should have been passed four years ago, so I have no explanations other than we are where we are, and as I often tell people, it takes four, perhaps five votes to pass this. Four, just to get a majority. Five, it says a mayoral veto, and so it's as challenging and frustrating as it is to get that group, and right now, there's not really four on any one. There's kind of a spectrum of where people are, and so if we were to have a vote, nothing would happen, and some people, that would be a win for them, but I think a lot of people want some progress, and the idea of this, as frustrating as it's been, is to make things better with no illusions that they will be perfect, and so I'm, that's still my guiding star is to make it better, and like I said, we're continuing to get feedback and information every time. I feel like we're getting closer, but it's frustrating, and anyone who cares deeply, and there's several people in this room who do, my apologies, it's taken this long, but I don't have a better way forward other than to keep on going. Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, and maybe a good suggestion for us would be to break this into multiple ordinances, because there are a few things in this ordinance that I think we can all agree on, that we could really pass in, you know, a month or a month and a half, and then from there, as you're talking about, let's get something going, then keep course correcting. I think that there is a something there that we can all agree on, and so if that's something that we wanted to do, I'm sure that we would find plenty of support, both from the tenants' group and the landlords' group. That would make a huge step forward, because one of the big things we hear all the time is, obviously, there are bad landlords out there, and I think we all care about that issue, and here's a way forward on a, here's a couple steps that we could take to help rectify that situation in the city of Spokane. That I think there's pretty universal support on. There's a lot of other things in there that obviously there isn't universal support on, and a lot of deferring views, and so I would recommend to us, let's break it into two, let's get the things that we all agree on, pass the one that we all agree on, and then we can debate about the rest of the stuff, you know, throughout the year, or years, or however long it takes.
Years.
And I'm going to disagree with you, and I will say two things. One, when we put together the core of this, and the core of this has not changed, fund Code Enforcement more robustly. Both landlords and tenants agreed that that's a good idea. Two, have a fund that we've talked about for years, and we have not put together for legal services and relocation fees on those occasions of the so-called bad landlord, that gets tenants out of there and holds landlords accountable. Three, a mitigation fund for those landlords that take a risk on tenants who might not have the best record, but they're going through housing services, so, you know, those are... Fourth, anti-retaliation, if tenants are trying to organize in that. No, I haven't heard anyone say anything. So, we have those core things, they've been in every draft, but the details of how to implement those, that is where it is, and so I don't know that. I've thought about that request to put it into six different ordinances, but the, my observation of the dynamics have been, if you put anything to do with landlord/tenant, people come on both sides and speak from their lived experience quite strongly and passionately, and oftentimes, it's about less than the details of the language versus the experience that they've had, and they feel compelled to come and speak that experience. And so my worry is that we would have six giant meetings as opposed to one where we tried to do that. And then, secondly, like I said, there was some attempt to do some compromising, a little bit give and take, and if you do it one at a time, whichever one gets first passed then is not a negotiation point for the other thing. So I generally like that idea, but I just wanted to push back, nothing personal, but it's just my lived experience on it. So, but we'll, it may come to that, so. But for tonight, the motion is to defer to February 27th.
February 27th.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Sorry, Council President, just quickly, speaking to what you're saying, I totally hear what you're saying, putting it all in one would certainly be more expedient, but you're right, there is a lot of pushback on every single one of these issues, and that's why it might be good to have every single one have its day in court, have its time under the magnifying, under the microscope, and give it its day in court, and so that might be a bonus for all of us, is while it's more work possibly, I think every single issue is something that then can be examined on its own.
All right, fair point. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that is deferred to the 27th. Still on agenda changes, and we have two resolutions that we're looking to consider adding. The first is approving the appointment of Christopher Wright as a policy advisor, that's Resolution 9. Is there a motion to add that to tonight's agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion about adding that to tonight's agenda?
Wait, Council President, can I just clarify what this is about? The resolution?
Oh, it would be, the resolution would be to resolve that Christopher Wright will be hired as the city council's policy advisor.
All right, so just for hiring this individual for this position?
Yes.
Not about the position?
No.
That we should have the position at all?
No, it doesn't change the position, no. No, that's an ordinance. Yeah.
But wait, we're not deciding if we're going to... This is about putting it on the agenda.
But he's saying tonight was deciding.
I'm just trying to clarify what this will be.
It's filling a position, not determining what the position does.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of adding to the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay?
Nay.
One nay, any abstentions?
I abstain.
Councilmember Stratton?
I didn't hear from Councilmember Wilkerson.
Oh, Councilmember Wilkerson, are you still there, or not?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, so that is five to one to add to the agenda, and then that brings us to Resolution 10, and that is putting written notice to exercise the potential option to purchase the Trent Avenue property. Looking over the lease agreement today, just to be clear, what that does is that triggers the selection of an independent appraiser, agreed to by both the owner and the city, and then they come up with an appraised value. However, that value just sets the table for negotiations, it's not binding on it, and then the parties have 15 days to come up with a purchase and sale agreement, doesn't require either of them to do it, but it gives some market analysis to support that. And that, if we were going to exercise that, we have to do it by the end of the month, and it has to be by certified mail, so I believe that we think tonight is the last night that we could approve that and make that happen, and as I mentioned, at study session, we did request a written extension of that, and the landlord was not willing to do that. Councilmember Cathcart.
Point of information, I recall that there being, something from the administration about some information that we had talked about on Thursday regarding this that wasn't quite accurate, and I just wonder, is there anything that needs to be clarified from that? No? Okay, I just want to make sure, because I thought I had heard that, so.
I don't remember that. So, anyway, just to be clear, this sets the process, but it's not the final go or no-go on purchasing it, so. All right, is there a motion to add Resolution 10?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Is there a timeline for why we need to get this going right now as opposed to just letting it go through its process?
Yes, it expires at the end of the month. All right, all those in favor of adding to tonight's agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, I'm not sure if I heard from you, Councilmember Wilkerson, but there's enough votes.
Aye.
And then, I think that's all the agenda changes. Is anyone else... We'll get to boards and commissions, but, okay. All right, so the, yes, we're going to be interviewing Mr. Sawyer next, and then we can vote on him, but the other, a couple of the other appointments need to be deferred because we could not figure out how to interview them virtually with the software glitch that's going, and that's the Spokane Housing Board Authority, one appointment, the Spokane Historic Landmarks Commission at Large, and the Spokane Public Library, two of... No, those have, okay. It's just the one, Landmarks Commission at Large, and the Spokane Housing Authority Board. I'm looking for a motion to defer them until January 30th.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, and to those of you who are deferring, nothing personal, we don't even have your names while we're doing it, it's just that we need to have those interviews. I'm just checking to see, does anyone else have any other agenda things before we can release Councilmember Wilkerson back to her recovery?
Council President?
Yes.
Did something come from the planning department around the West Quadrant, Jeff?
That was committee.
A resolution?
Is she thinking about committee?
It was on committee today. I don't know.
Okay, I thought they were trying to...
Spencer's here. Is it on consent?
Spin the rules and get that going.
We initially were hoping to get it done, to get it on the agenda for this coming Monday, a week from today, but that's your town hall.
Right.
I've confirmed that we're good for February 6th.
Okay. Spencer appreciates your concern, but he's good. Okay. With that, Councilmember Wilkerson, we will, we don't need you as much anymore, so feel free to stick around and listen, or not, but appreciate that you're making the effort, even though you're not... even though you're not feeling well. And I will move on now to Mr. Sawyer. If you could come up and appreciate your patience. And if you could just introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in this board and what you think you'll bring to it.
My name is Tom Sawyer. I'm retired from Corytown Company, where I was vice president for many years. I've been in the ceramic business for probably 50 years, and I've been involved in historic preservation probably for 50 of those years, as a material supplier, and as an engineer, and as a consultant. And I've been asked to join the Landmark Commission, and I think it's a worthwhile opportunity for me, and a place that I can use my skills and my past experience, and I'm kind of looking forward to it.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sawyer?
Are you from Spokane?
No.
No, okay.
I'm from Beaver Falls, Pennsylvania, or the United States, because I've lived just about every place. But I did come to Spokane to do some engineering work, and it was during the World's Fair, and I can tell you that that brought me to Spokane. That was a great event. It really was.
Very cool. If you wanted to give us maybe a couple of your favorites, when you're thinking of historic preservation, what are some of your favorite parts of town? When you drive by, it's just something that, you know, tugs at your heart, or something like that. What is it?
Well, the Davenport is one. The old National Bank Building is another one. Paulson, and frankly, every terracotta building in town which you may not recognize yourselves, I've probably been involved with throughout the country. I've worked on Heinz Hall in Pittsburgh, the Wrigley Building in Chicago, some of the more historic buildings around the country I've been involved with, and some here in Spokane. Spokane is actually quite lucky. Their terracotta and brick buildings are in great shape. That's due to the product and the materials that they have in our particular climate. But it's fun to walk downtown and look up without having something fall in your head.
Any other questions for Mr. Sawyer?
I think you're going to be a great addition.
I know.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Councilmember Canair?
I just want to thank you for, I think we planted the seed when we had lunch, and I just want to thank you for offering up your time. I think you're going to be a tremendous addition to the commission, so thanks so much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep. Thank you again so much, and thanks for coming down in person, and you don't have to come down for the meeting. We'll vote on you tonight. And by way of further agenda, we're also going to revoke on one salary review commission appointment and two public library board appointments. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Perkins for the consent agenda for tonight for briefing.
Thank you, Council President. Members of the City Council, Johnny Perkins, City Administrator. This is the advance briefing for Monday, January 23rd. On the consent agenda, item number one is an inter-agency agreement between Spokane Police Department and the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission regarding various costs for the basic law enforcement academies. Our briefer is Jackie McConnell.
Hello, Council. So this is just basically a re-up of our agreement with CJTC. This would go through the end of 2024. It allows for three academy classes per year, with SPD getting 10 positions in each academy, and it also allows for certain reimbursement of certain expenses to the tune of about $275,000 per class, so about $825,000 a year.
And so this is going to allow, we get 10 spots in the three academies?
Yes. If we're able to fill them, we will be allowed 10 slots per academy, so as opposed to 20 before a year, the potential for 30 a year.
Is that going to be the norm going forward for us, having three academies that we get to do, or is that something special for this year?
Well, they'd like it to be the norm, so ideally it will be the norm, yes.
And what's our sign up for the first academy coming up? How many people are we going to have?
Well, we had seven, and so that academy is in session right now. We had seven, and we're down to six, unfortunately.
Okay. And was the next one, do we have people slotted for the second one?
We're doing backgrounds now, so we're doing interviews, and hopefully we'll, you know, get 10 for that one as well.
And when does that one start?
I want to say early May. I don't remember the exact date, but early May.
And the third one, when does that start roughly?
Um, August-ish.
Okay.
There's some overlap between, I'll say, one, two, and three. There's overlap between one and two, and then two and three.
Okay. Okay. All right. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just a quick question. You said we had seven, we're down to six.
Yes.
Did somebody poach one of our potential applicants?
No. It's, it was, it was pretty surprising with this candidate, but actually it had to do with family reasons.
Okay. And then, so my follow-up to that is, is the cost generally the same if it's six, or seven, or eight, or, I mean, is that, does the number of people adjust the cost of running an academy?
It's.
Are we paying the same regardless?
Well, we pay per recruit, and I don't remember honestly exactly what it is per recruit. So we pay a certain amount to CJTC per recruit. We, however, get reimbursed for this MOU, the same amount, regardless of how many people we have in the academy, if that makes sense.
Okay. Yeah.
Because they're, they're paying us to host it here at our facility, and then we have our people in it.
Yes. Yeah, they rem, yeah, so we assign two TAC officers to each class and one sergeant, and then we actually have another TAC now that will be assisting from another agency, and that's an agreement between that agency and CJTC. So, we have those TACs, and then we get also reimbursed for certain other expenses pertaining to the classes. So they cover the salaries of those two TACs and that one sergeant, and then reimburse us for certain other expenses.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Consent item number two is a low bid of Inland Asphalt Company for residential grind and overlay. Our presenter is Dan Buller.
Good afternoon. Item two, proposed low-bait contract with Inland Asphalt in the Spokane Valley for the 2022 residential grind and overlay for $1.69 million, to which we propose to set aside 10% administrative reserve. This is the annual grind and overlay project, and rehabilitates pavement in various locations around town as shown in your briefing packet. Four bids. Low bid was approximately $230,000, or about 12% below the engineer's estimate, and work will begin and end this spring and summer.
Just wondering what the trends are. You know, we've seen inflation's gone down, and some supply chains are working better. So are the bids tending to be lower than the engineer's estimates lately?
Well, yes, but not because the bids are going down, but because the engineer's estimates are catching up, unfortunately.
Right.
So, no, no declines.
There's no decline in actual costs, but the delta between what we're worried that it would be. Okay.
I wish I had better news on that one, but.
No, no. No, that's great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Buller. Item three on the consent agenda is a contract amendment with SHI International Corporation for final payment of Microsoft 365 licensing. And our presenter from the IT Division, Laz Martinez.
Good afternoon. So, we signed an agreement with Microsoft that encompasses three years, and during those three years, all we do is just renew the license. At the end of the third year, we re-negotiate the volume. This is the last year of those, the three-year cycle, and we have seen an increase in the cost related to several items. One of the most important ones is the implementation of the multi-factor authentication feature. You may have seen that now when you look into our systems, you have to type a code. What that does is it improves our security positioning. It's something that you know, the password, and something that you have, the code, so that is translated to roughly $172,000 in a difference in increase. That's the reason for the addendum. Any questions?
Sorry, quickly. So, just by adding multi-factor authentication, that added $200,000 in essence to our contract?
Well, it's more than that.
Okay.
So when, let's say we are, we are a level of license that is level two, and then in order to enable multi-factor authentication, we had to jump to level three. Within that level three, we have other things that we are acquiring, but they're bundled. We cannot separate them. Something else that we're getting, and we are already implementing, is something that we call mobile device management. It would allow us to actually, for example, remotely erase a phone if it's lost. We call it mobile device management. It's also called in tune. So within those licenses that we acquired, and this process that we're doing is a true up process, then we're also getting that feature and rolling that feature out. As a matter of fact, we have now 750 mobile devices that are new that have been rolled out with the mobile device management included on it. And we will be replacing phones, and as we do, we roll out this new feature. Sir?
Yeah, just to ask, and I really don't mean this to be snarky, but, I mean, we have like the Find My Phone, and you can erase your phone remotely with that. So I'm just kind of curious, what's the advantage of the mobile management you're talking about?
Very good point. So, the Find My Phone is an end-user feature. The mobile device management, for example, allows us to control what are the apps that you upload into a CD-issue phone. There is a difference. An end-user phone, you can download any app from the, from the Apple Store, but if we want, for example, a code enforcement inspector to have a, an application here so we can update the code enforcement status for an episode he's doing, then we can control that. The other thing we can do is, we can build into the phone other security features that will prevent you from installing, from browsing a location that you're not supposed to. So there are many more, think of it like, what we're talking about here is professional-grade mobile device management administrator.
Okay.
And the Find My Phone is end-user base.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? Good? Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Have a wonderful day.
Item four, second amended and restated Community Revitalization Financing and Tax Increment Agreement with Spokane County clarifying the Beacon Hill sub-area improvements. Our presenter is Teri Stripes.
Council President, Council, thank you for the opportunity. You guys are familiar with our local tax increment financing districts that we use here in the city. Well, years ago, back in 2013, we partnered with the depart, department, with Spokane County for the Beacon Hill Tax Increment Financing District. And so, we're not lead agency on this tax increment financing district. The county is, but the county has to have our agreement with our participation. So right now, what they're asking us to do is they have come to the conclusion that it is best for the developer and for the county, and quite frankly, it's going to be easier for us, too, if we move this agreement into a situation where it's much like our Kendall Yards TIF. Greenstone comes to us, when they've done the improvement, we reimburse them. This allows the developer on Beacon Hill to do the improvements, go to the county, get reimbursed for those public infrastructure improvements, and that's what we're being asked to agree to through this inner local agreement. Any questions?
Do they still have to pay prevailing wage?
Oh, yes, on all public improvements. That's a requirement. I will ask, would you like staff to be available at your legislative session for this?
Nope.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Stripes. Item five on the consent agenda for Monday, January 23rd, is a final contract extension with the East Spokane Business Association for management of the East Bragg Business Improvement District. Our presenter is Amanda Beck.
Good afternoon, Council. This is the final of a four-year contract extension with ESBA for the East Bragg bid. We made some clarifications that we talked about previously in committee to the contract just to outline what is city responsibility and what is the responsibility of the bid manager. Other than that, there were no other changes to the contract. Were there any questions?
So after this extension, is it just going to be a sole source, or is it going to go out for RFP? What's our practice?
Council President, we would go out to an RFP. We don't typically like to extend past 10 to 15 years, just to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and being transparent, so we'll go out to RFP again for them, for the contract manager.
Thanks.
Similar to Teri's question, would you like me to be available at the legislative meeting tonight?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Have a nice evening. The next three items, six, seven, and eight. Number six is a grant award with the Smith-Barberry Progressive Fund to be utilized for community court and veterans' court to purchase bus passes. Item seven, inter-agency agreement between Spokane Municipal Court and the Washington Traffic Safety Commission to provide grant funding for drug and alcohol testing for DUI court participants. And item eight, grant agreement with Spokane Municipal Court and Washington State Administrative Office of the Courts in support of Domestic Violence Intervention Therapeutic Court. Our presenter and briefer is Sarah Thompson.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Thompson. I'm the new therapeutic court manager for the Spokane Municipal Court, and we are here today to say that we are receiving funds for all of our programs. So the first one, I believe, was the Smith-Barberry Progressive Funds for $13,000. That's going to support our community court and our veterans' treatment court with warming items, hand warmers, beanies, scarves, jackets, boots, anything we need for that, and then any little funding that we can apply for transportation. We have the $50,000 from the Office of Traffic Safety Fund that is solely to be used for drug testing. In previous years, we've used some for drug testing and some for staff or training salaries. This year, we are using all $50,000 for drug testing. The other one is for the AOC funding for our Domestic Violence Intervention Therapeutic Court. That one is $714,818. That's to be applied for two community justice counselors, one community justice specialist, staff training, equipment. A large portion will be going towards treatment services for domestic violence, substance use, and mental health, and then I think we have training in there, and so we're hoping to be able to receive all those funds in. Any questions on any of them?
Councilmember Ringel?
And these are all grants, so this isn't city of Spokane, and this is money we're receiving from others for these purposes?
Correct. They are considered grant awards. However, the Smith-Barberry has no match, the AOC has no match, and the OTS has no match.
And when will the first DVITC court be going? Or is it already going?
Right. So we have our work group in progress right now, and we are hoping to launch in April. We have a RFP out currently for the domestic violence treatment portion of that, and then we are working through our policy manual right now. We have our mission statement built, we have our entry criteria eligibility, we have our assessments that we're going to be using, so we're coming along, and it's kind of similar to some of the other discussions today, that you want to do it right, and you want to make sure you have everything outlined. And so, initially, I think there was a push to go live in February, however, to be sensible about this and do it right, and make the best program. We will start in April.
Okay. And that's the same court that we got federal funds for recently?
Correct.
Yep. Okay. Well, we're really looking forward to seeing that.
Thank you. I will be back when we hit those federal funds.
Okay. Great. Okay, great, and welcome to the city.
Thank you very much, it's been fantastic. Any other questions? Wonderful, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Continuing on with the consent agenda for Monday, January 23rd. Item nine, report of the mayor pending, 9A B, claims and payments of previously approved obligation, including those of Parks and Library. 9C, payroll claims of previously approved obligations. Those will be considered this evening during the council session. Item 10, city council meeting minutes of January 12 and 19 also be considered during this evening's council session. Under special budget ordinances, we just heard from Ms. Thompson, which she briefed us on 36350, 36351, and 36352, all special budget ordinances. Moving then to resolution and final readings, we have the deferral of Resolution 0097, which takes us to Resolution 0006, which is the appointment of Patrick Stryker as the Director of Neighborhood Services. And as we briefed at Finance Administration Committee, it is, again, my pleasure and my honor, on behalf of the mayor, to officially present Mr. Stryker to the City Council for consideration as the Director of the Office of Neighborhood Services. Patrick formerly and previously and currently serves for the Spokane COPS. Patrick's leadership, knowledge, and understanding of our community and our neighborhoods is going to be a very valuable asset to our Office of Neighborhood Services, and it is an honor and a pleasure for me, on behalf of the mayor, to introduce Mr. Stryker to the City Council for consideration during this evening's session. Mr. Stryker is here in the audience today, in case you have any questions or comments for him.
I do.
I doubt we have any questions, but I know we have some comments, so.
Is it true that you're going to start at 8:00 tomorrow morning?
Absolutely, and I couldn't be more excited, so, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
I think that's unless we defer it, though, right?
Right.
Do you need a break? A couple weeks?
I'm good to go. No, I'm really excited for this position. You guys know I've been with COPS for eight years. I've worked hand-in-hand with the neighborhood councils, with all these city projects that we've done, from the Dump Passes to the Neighbor's Drive 25 campaign, the mobile radar units. So I've worked with ONS and all of its various aspects for eight years, and so it just seems like a very natural fit and a good transition for me, and I'm incredibly excited, and I thank Johnny for the opportunity.
And I think the neighborhoods are going to be very, very happy.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I would just say, I think you are a great fit for this role, and I really look forward to, you know, once you get your feet under you, kind of chatting about, you know, how we can just improve the neighborhood, you know, organization and system. And I'm sure you've got, just from your time as the COPS director, I'm sure you've had some thoughts as to how things could be better streamlined and whatnot.
Absolutely, I do, yeah, thank you.
And Councilmember Canere will meet you here tomorrow at 8:00 AM.
That would be a first.
What did I do to you? What high school did you go to?
I went to Lakewood High School on the west side, and then, but came out here, and I've lived here since 97, back when I was a young man and didn't have any gray hair.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
That was... That's my question usually.
Yeah.
She takes it all away from me.
Well, I just want to, I am super excited. As you know, probably, we have started the process of a refresh of our Neighborhood Council Community Assembly in conjunction with them, and I'm so excited you'll be here to help lead that. And I also just have to say that I can think of very few people that have been appointed by this council in the last seven years that had as much support from the council from the get-go. So congratulations on all that that you have earned, and we look forward to great things.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stryker. Next item under resolutions, I believe Council President, we added those to the agenda, improving the appointment of Mr. Christopher Wright as the Policy Advisor for the City Council. And also, the next resolution is establishing written notice to the owner of 4320 East Trent Avenue that the city intends to purchase the building. So we've covered both of those, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, my scorecard is now full, and I've completed my briefing for January 23rd City Council Session.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, tonight's agenda is passed. Now you have a little more work to do for...
Yes, sir.
...advanced agenda.
All right. Moving now to Monday, January 30th's advanced agenda. Number one and two on the consent agenda, actually, 1, 2, and 3. Number one is a three-year value blanket for the purchase of caustic soda for the waste-to-energy facility. Item two is a contract renewal 3 of 4 with Brand Safeway Services for removal replacement of insulation and cladding at the waste-to-energy facility. And item three is a contract amendment with United States Electric for electrical maintenance and technical support at the waste-to-energy facility. Proud to introduce our presenter, Mr. David Payne.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council members. The first is a three-year blank, value blanket with Oxark of Spokane for caustic soda that we use at the waste energy plant as part of our emissions control and boiler chemical systems. This contract is estimated to be $100,000 annually for a total three-year cost of $300,000. The second is a third of four renewals with Brand Safeway of Pasco, Washington, to provide scaffolding services at the waste energy facility. This contract should not exceed $100,000 on an annual basis. And the final, as I briefed a couple weeks ago, 2022 was a tough year for us. We had some unexpected costs during our turbine overhaul, which required us to do some additional work, not within our original scope, but within the confines of the contract. And we need to add $105,000 to the U.S. Electric contract for electrical maintenance and technical support during that event. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Continuing on with the consent agenda, item four, report of the mayor pending claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library. That information will be completed for the Monday, January 30th council session consideration. And item five, city council meeting minutes will also have information for council's consideration on Monday, January 30th. If I may, please return to the appointments. We have two reappointments to the Spokane Park Board, and we have one reappointment to the Bicycle Advisory Board for your consideration on Monday, January 30. Moving then to emergency ordinances, the first ordinance is specifying the process for the conduct of collective bargaining, and I'll turn that over to Council President Beck.
Yeah, I'm going to be looking for a motion to defer that to February 13th in a moment, because this is a town hall meeting, and we're trying not to have anything on the agenda that would generate testimony particularly, and just wanted to let people know, I've been in touch with some of our bargaining units, and we're going to have a proposed amendment to it, that instead of previewing alternative agreements in executive session before they get signed by management, instead, we would just make sure that we have a council member or council staff designee in the bargaining sessions to keep us in the loop so that we'll know what's going on. So we do that. And so, haven't talked to all the bargaining units on that, but FIRE, they thought that was a good idea to avoid what we have had sometimes in the past, which is not feeling like we were in the loop. But right now, I'm looking for a motion to defer Ordinance C 36259 to February 13th.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, I, question about it. How, I guess in your proposed amendment, how would that individual be chosen? Is it the council president? Is it a member-at-large that's voted on by the majority? Is it?
Hadn't thought about it, so, let's chat.
Okay.
But, yeah. Yeah, because we would have to, one, I mean, I would imagine we would do it at our annual appointments, and then just, probably the question is, depends what contracts are up for them, but I think that's when we would do it generally. If we pass this, we would, of course, do it a little bit out of cycle, because it'll be after that, but, yeah.
But the...
Be the vote of the...
And I'll look at it once it's drafted, but the other part of it, too, was clarifying exactly when something is TA'd, correct? And would that still remain? Because that, to me, is the biggest thing we've got to sort out, so that we don't ever have what's happened before again. And I don't know exactly the right process to do that, but I think that's the thing that needs to be solved.
Well, I'll chat with you some offline about that.
Okay.
All right. So that was moved to second, and other conversation, or other comments. All right, all those in favor of deferral to February 13th indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred 13th, and...
All right, moving then to one of the final two items on the advanced briefing for Monday, January 30th, resolution declaring emerging authorizing of value blanket order be set for road salt with custom salt solutions. Our presenter, Mr. Clint Harris.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council. So the Street Department is requesting approval to establish a value blanket to purchase road salt for a cost not to exceed $100,000 for the remainder of this season. Questions? Thank you.
Council President, could I just take a moment? I had the pleasure to go out on a ride with our snowplows recently, and I want to commend Mr. Harris for his leadership with our snowplow operations these past 30 to 45 days. Clint, thank you for the tremendous job that the teams are doing out there on our streets. I just want to acknowledge your leadership in that effort, so thank you.
And actually, sorry, I'm going to piggyback off of this, because I had a phone call with a county official today, and they had mentioned to me how they couldn't wait to get to the city portion of the road, because it was so clear comparatively. And doesn't care, it doesn't matter who it was I was talking to, but they just, they just thought it was great once they get there, so you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, I'll pass that on to the team.
Thank you, Clint. And our final presenter for the Monday, January 30th advanced briefing, the appointment of Rich Lance as Director of Parks, Finance, and Budget. Our presenter is our Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Garrett Jones.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council. I can, I not like Clint, we do plow sidewalks, though, so hopefully those are okay. But we're excited today to, for the council's consideration to appoint Rich Lentz as our next Director of Budget and Finance. Bark Buning, who is currently in that role today, will be retiring, but bless his heart, we're a family, so he's going to stick around. We have a higher head authority to be able to meet with Rich and be able to get him up to speed on the great 13th month that we're working on right now in finance. Mr. Lentz brings a leadership role. He's been with STCU for the last 17 years, and has been in a leadership role there since 2007. He manages all their department budgets and their organizational budgets, and also, a big component of this, too, is the customer service side, as a current VP. And so he'll also be bringing that strategic forecasting and budgeting that we've been looking for as well in Parks and Recreation. And with that, we're excited for him to join the team. And a question for the council, because of timing, and thank you, Council President and others, for letting me fast-track this. We do have to brief it at PIES Committee next Monday, and then for legislative session as well next Monday, and Mr. Lentz would be available. Would you like to have him at committee, or do you want us at the 6 o'clock, or are you just fine?
I'd rather just have him at committee.
Okay.
So we can just meet him.
Perfect.
But just briefly.
All right, we'll do that on committee, all right.
Okay.
Well, you asked.
I asked.
Don't mind me, I'm just the committee chair, okay.
That's true. Yeah, I'm sorry, committee chair. All right, thank you.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Council President, that concludes the advanced briefing for Monday, January 30.
All right, all those in favor of approving the advanced agenda as read, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.